We call this meeting of the town council board with quick stamp notification or main standing for official elections, including what you please.
Our God, we thank you to this day, we thank you for the beauty of it, that you've chosen the water, the earth, and we ask that God that you see what we need and that you would send us rain again. We thank you for that. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, and we ask those things that we do now to be in the best interest of that community, and we thank you for all these things in your own name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, living and to a justice for all.
Hi, Mr. Judy, we're starting.
Okay.
All right.
All right, everyone's had the opportunity to look at your, the new agenda, and, uh, which is the new things that, uh...
Uh, I got the order for the pole barn.
That's very good.
I just got our, like, our letter today.
Okay. Oh, that's not the same anyway, I'm sorry. Okay, if you have a chance to look at the, uh, agenda, Sheriff entertain a motion to accept approval, and if you have, uh, conditions, corrections, or the issue of something, I can make it, sir. Are you done?
I'll make that motion.
We have the motion by Mr. Park, but we accept the, uh, agenda and approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes. Okay, I don't see any way on the agenda audience, uh, or some of the individuals.
Yeah, yeah, there's no idea.
We don't have an attendant, obviously, okay? No one on the un-agenda audience, okay? That right to try and add to the first.
Okay, the first thing is to award the contract for Rogers Square. That's the grant administration and the engineering. Y'all have the packets. There was only one bidder for each one, so all I need is just a motion to select those.
And everybody to look at them, and we know what we're voting on. It's for the, uh, this, uh, the grant one, is the administration, and Dewberry is for the engineering services. Any questions? Any discussion? Sheriff, accept the motion. Can we go to the one? Is this law? You want two for the record?
Yeah, this is the two, okay.
Sir?
Both of them at once, right?
This, she said let's do one and find this for the records.
Okay.
Let's do the, yeah, when you have any hand, is that okay? Why would we do the, the administration proposal first?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion that we accept the loan submission, uh, that's on some prices for the administration. Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion is second, and I think I'm going to discuss it within just a few weeks, build some news, and then we have to re-advertise, so any questions again? Okay, all right. Any other discussion on the motion?
I would ask, why is it in this case we don't have to have three? Is that just...
Well, I contacted the, um, the grant administrator to see on this particular one, they said one was fine. As long as I had advertised in a metropolitan newspaper, which we did, we went to the news center.
All right.
So, I clarified that, just to make sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes?
Yes.
Now, we will entertain a motion to, uh, approve again the loan submission of Dewberry to do the engineers on the, on the Rogers Square. I'd say we want both of them on Rogers Square. Much pleasure, the counsel.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion for second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes? Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Um, the next thing I have is the project updates. We, of course, we have the potable water and the storm drainage is out right now for, um, the contractor bids. They'll be back in by June 11th. They will vote only by the next meeting. So, once we have that contractor online, we'll be able to start work. Um, Oyde and Cora, they're still working. We just got the release of funds this week, so Dewberry now can go full-time into getting those, um, the survey and design and all that ready to go. On the COVID-19 project with Jack Hesman, he, Fred Fox, and I met about the type of building that we wanted, which we had talked about in the, in the meeting. They think that's totally fine with what we want to do. There's not going to be any problems, but, so they're going to start the design phase, and so hopefully that'll be back quickly. On Jefferson and Jackson, um, so we, the, the project came in, Jonathan has said 102,459, but actually put the figures in your books. It's about 128,000 over project, I mean, over, um, award. Jonathan had gone to the DOT this week, and they said they didn't have any further money. So, he's called Robertson Roberts, who was the low bidder, and they're going to try to value engineer the project and get the money down to be able to still do it. Um, with this project, the extension we had received through 630, so we're working on getting another extension for this, which may in the long run be a good thing, because, as y'all probably seen, Sixth Avenue is totally destroyed. Um, I checked with, um, Anderson Columbia, and they said that it'll be about six months before the paving is done on that Sixth Avenue. So, I don't know how that will affect, because they've got traffic rerouted, and they've got heavy trucks coming in and out of there right now. Some of them are coming down and coming out Fifth Street. And, um, so it may be, the delay may help us in the, in the paving not to mess up what we've already got paved, while they're still messing up Sixth Avenue.
Thank you for your optimism.
Yep, so that may be a blessing in disguise, but we're going to continue to meet. Um, DOT has indicated there's not going to be any project, get any problem getting the extension. So, right now, Jonathan hopes to come back in the June meeting with the lower figures, so we can award that bid, and we can get this project moving.
That's a large gap to best to cover, 28,000. But hopefully they'll do that.
Yep.
And they're supposed to pay Third Avenue for the water, as well, Margaret left there. We need to probably check into that, be sure they're going to do that. That street over there is totally...
Yep.
We'll have to start reading that if we don't...
We're going to have to start reading.
It's bad. Yeah, it's bad. Right now, honestly, it wouldn't even do any good, because those water trucks are in and out of here so much. They're lined up down the street some days.
Well, it's supposed to be paid, and they're with this brother, 70,000.
So, that water woman who had this under 20,000, that's a little bit of a bonus, brother.
We're, we're doing it hard. Um, the Possum Palace, the playground, we, uh, we had noticed, um, after we started working on the paperwork, that the fencing had been taken out of that project, although it was written in the original application. At some point, when it got awarded, the fencing had been taken out by the grant manager. I've gone back to them, because fencing is some of the most needed things down there. And so, um, she is working on getting the fencing put back, so we're kind of on hold with that grant, so we get a yes or no from that. But we have, um, I think that's a 2027 grant, let's see. Yep, 2027, for that one, that grant, and it's 50,000. It won't take us very long to spend that money at all. And then on the Rogers Square, since we, um, advertised and awarded these bids tonight, I'll send these, the stuff on up, the bid packet on up, and we'll get the blessing of Florida Commerce, and then we can, uh, begin to work on that project. We're still on the, on the environmental review part of that as well. So, they're moving, not as fast as I want them to, but they're, they're moving. I'm not letting them sit there and wait.
We've got updates, that's a wonderful team.
I, I don't, you got more?
No, no, go ahead.
I don't, I don't recall, uh, a time that we ever had this many grants one, one time, but, uh, I don't recall that we ever had, whatever number we had, one or, or a dozen, that we became, that we became, became this close to deadlines, and, uh, I said 25, 23, it was the last I had, of those extensions. What happens if, whatever, the 128, what happens if we, if we don't go through? Is the city responsible for that? I, I don't think that we are, or so much. We get about contractors, order people, different things, and different things. Uh, it's going to be hard for me to try to explain to people that we had, uh, two votes repaid, two votes to, you repay, some things like that, and it didn't get done.
I've asked that question several times about all the grants. They're assuring me that they're not going to take the money back. The money will not be taken back. We may have to lower the specs on Jefferson and Jackson, say, one and three-quarter inch instead of two-inch pavement. That's an option. Um, so, all that would be figured in on the value engineering of the project. So, basically, he's going back to Robertson Roberts, and they're going to try to figure out how to get it done at the original bid, if they can. And then they're going to go to three-notch, and of course, if Robertson Roberts comes down, three-notch will need to come down a little bit on the CEI services. So, he's in the mix. Um, I did mention to him, once we know about Robertson Roberts, we'll have to get the blessing of the DOT, that maybe I'll get a conference call with, uh, Dewberry, the grant manager, me, you, or Joe, or whoever wants to be in on it, we can actually hear from DOT themselves. So, um, they approached us about going ahead and getting the grant extension, so that we don't run out of time on the Jefferson and Jackson. So, they're well aware that there's money issues on the project.
Yeah. And, and, and that's good, and I know that DOT certainly understands. I don't know if you saw the news earlier in the week, Tuesday night, I believe, uh, they had the, uh, the information officer, they were talking about Highway 79, you know what the problem is over there, I think, who'd be watching that week. And, uh, now that it's extended back to 27 or 30 or something like that, it's already been 22 years.
They are working, they are, they are working on that. I get mine every week.
I didn't realize that, but then some of you remember, there was a, there was a sign that, you're just beyond, uh, we call it Jupiter Station, back to that, that's a sign in there, says, uh, project completion, spring of 2018. So, so we're seven years behind it here at least, and, um, so, so they're familiar with things. I don't know how long we can land stuff on Michael or Cozic or some of those things, but our grants, uh, end up here following, before we, before we came along and things like that. I just, as long as they give us extensions, that's good, but after what I've access to come in there?
Yep. It's a lot of grants, a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Every grant wants to have all these meetings, and so...
And I, I tilt my hat to you for the way that you've kept up with them, and, and they put, but they's been one of the best things that you've done.
Uh, the next thing is the budget status. I just put it in there for y'all to, to have, uh, like I always do. This month on our water, it was a little, we were getting, we were a little close to what our income was, but, but two times a year, we move Philip's salary from water over into general, so that we can pay him. And, and that's to make sure that our QuickBooks captures all of the salary dollars at one time, it just makes it easier. So, we had moved those, it was right at $7,000, but, um, we're still, we're still in good shape with that.
And you have to be in good shape with the budget. We've had to work with this year, you're doing good, man.
Yeah, I notice our financials are ahead of expectations, but so is our income, so...
Yeah, it's all coming together. Um, the next thing is approval of the development, development application for 18... Oh, no, no, sorry.
Before we go past that, um, I just want to say, did I notice that the collections, is it zero? Water collections?
Yes, you did. I was hoping somebody would recognize that.
I'll say that, I thought.
It's a blank, I'm like, I'm like, the printer malfunctioned.
I actually went back and said to Kim, are you, you check that again. We had no water collections for this month.
Sounds like DG.
That's the first time that's happened.
Yep, we did. It has been, it has been painful.
And I'm going to admittedly, and I told my wife, that's Kim's, that's Kim. She stays on it.
And she stays on it.
No, I'm giving you credit.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, she'll stay on it until they start getting, you know, ugly, and then I'll step in, but, um...
Anyway, so thank you.
It's been painful, but we got it. In fact, I have me a sticky note here.
Great job.
See the collection report. Okay, the next thing is, um, email regarding, oh, the water operator update. So, I did decide on David Castle Berry for the water operator. He is doing a great job. Found some things that we need to clean up a little bit. He's changed some of the way we do business, um, to capture different elements of the water. I am loving it. He's trained Philip everything he knows. He said he, his philosophy is that Philip and I should know everything about this water system from the beginning to the end. So, he spent a lot of time with Philip, talking to Philip about how to capture the data and that kind of stuff, so they are working great together. And, um, I'm loving it so far. He's doing really good. Um, the next is the email regarding the next step for the fire department merger. Y'all had asked me to contact, or Jeff asked me to contact each of you to see what issues you have. It's in here somewhere. Where?
Behind the clerk.
Do you have it?
Attorney.
Oh, we have it. Attorney? Um, and so, each, each one of you kind of mentioned to me that...
We're going to debrief this.
That the one issue is about the building. That was the, the holdout to the building.
Yep.
Oh, yep. And so, you can see his email back. So, he, he had called me, we spent some time talking, but I decided I wanted, wanted it writing from him, just to make sure I didn't mess it up. Um, and so, basically, the kind of informal agreement is that the county will agree to the reverter clause, that if anything ever happens, it's not a fire station, it will come back to the, the town. Um, the equipment would be transferred via a simple bill of sale with no fee. So, do one of those things that you buy the clerk, it says for $10, more or less. Um, the, the next step, according to Jeff, is that the council has to agree that that's what they want to do, and they don't have to put on the county, board a county commissioner agenda, to see if the county will accept it. So, um, that's, that's the next step. He says, hint, he and the county attorney had discussions. It would be a very simple thing to do, and, um, but for him to proceed, he will need a vote. Uh, let me see what he says. Uh, let me, um, oh, yeah, to proceed, contingent on whether this county decides, let me see. With, the only thing I need from the council is a vote that they want to proceed or not proceed with the process, contingent on whether the county decides it can and will do it also. So, uh, he was going to go ahead and put it on the county, um, agenda this month, to see kind of how they felt, but then he felt like it would be best just to hold off, to make sure that that's what the city wants him to do before he goes and approaches the county, to see if they're willing to accept it. And so, that's where we are.
So, if we do this, I mean, they still have to come back, right? Because, I mean, like, Roger, they would have to sign something, right? They'd have to come back to us again, right?
Jeff said what would happen was if we decide we want to do it, once the county voted, whether they would or would not, he would come back to the council. He'll come back here himself.
Okay.
And talk to y'all about it.
We're not just throwing this out there, and it's going to get happening, we got...
Right.
It's all right, we can move slowly, as long as we're moving, we're headed in that direction, if we need to keep moving. Thinking, I'm thinking if there was a question or a finish side there, we'd have to clear that, we'd have to force a closing.
Well, I think Mr. Massey and Justin had talked about it. The county commissioners I know know about it, but they haven't as a body, sat down and said, yes, we'll, you know, we'll take it over. So, Jeff said he would need to approach the county.
I'm not sure what's what, uh, they, Justin and Jeff talked about it, but, uh, if we had, if we had agreed that night, yes, let's do it, and voted, then they had to even vote it. And I'm sure they're going to do it, but I just think that's a part of the point. Does this cover everything that we talked about? Is everybody satisfied with what we agreed? Uh, is it too late to add something?
No.
Okay, uh, when we respond to it, I'd like to also add that some of the assurance that our agreement, that this will writing, an agreement in writing, or interlocal agreement or something, uh, and I constantly make sure that, uh, even though we have it verbally in business, uh, that we're going to still be able to allow our fire departments to to fund that parade, to Easter parade, any other parade that any other community has, that they have any flag, we have to be allowed to participate, uh, those kinds of things. And we have in, in the past, and I would like to say it's to continue to do that, uh, be able, be in the, uh, in the funerals of those people who have, who are only council, their spouses, parents, or, that has a tie to the council and/or the fire department. And I continue, I think, I think, I, it's, you know, it's not just somebody, if we're going in writing, and that will changes and this will changes, it's there for somebody in the future, yeah.
Okay, so the fundraiser, the money will go into our fire department.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. So, would that maybe come back to the city? Are you going to count, you can take charge of it?
Uh, I think it's going, and I'll be a follow-up question. Uh, I'm thinking that, that, did, uh, Mr. Massey, Jeff, to, to Jeff, uh, did Mr. Massey say, or Justin say, that the fire department will discontinue, uh, fundraisers, or will they be committed to continuing fundraisers? I, I thought they said they would be funded through a big division process, and they wouldn't be doing fundraisers.
Right.
Right.
But they did stipulate that they would continue to be involved in community, that's continue to be local community events, right? There'd still be a local community presence.
So, if the development club, or Boy Scouts, or baseball team want to have a fundraiser, the fire department could help us, but the fire department is not going to be doing their fundraisers.
Because it doesn't, that's not a corporation, right? It doesn't have entity, really.
The fire department, yeah, yeah.
And then like with the county fire departments now, they, they don't allow them to do fundraisers. They come to the board when they need something, the board funds it, so they don't allow them.
And I think that's what he said, because we'll be telling, they port to the county fire department, uh, but by, by name and by action.
And I know they have a budget, because I've seen them do it. They do a lot of community events in which they give out gifts, and the Washington County Fire Department has a community budget. I forget what the word you'd be calling it. A good field budget. I don't know what the word is.
Yeah.
Where they buy candy and hats and do fireworks.
Well, that's one, uh, and, for my, is that one of the things that, uh, last three times, if you get all their fundraisers, it's sometimes just because that, that I make contributions to, and, um, if we're, it sounds like that I'm not going to be required or even expected, or, you cannot have to yield to the county.
Well, and I've heard the county say before, your tax dollars are already funding this department, so when we collect from you, we're collecting from you again, where your taxes are already funding these departments. I've heard them say that.
And what's going to be good about, about it, one of the things I think is going to be good about it is the fundraiser historically, in, in the last couple of years I have, but historically, the fundraisers went to, to help name and search, buy tires from lots and things like that. After we, after, a few years ago, we got where we had to manage them, but it was still theirs to say, this is how we're going to spend it, we just kept up with it. And, uh, so that's going to be a look, even thinking what I will have to do. And, yeah, sometimes we had to scratch our head, and all to find out where we could help them buy a tire, or replace a, or a bearing, or a flare for what needs to be done. That's going to shield.
Right. Yeah, the county, with them, were responsible for taking care of whatever they need.
Ryan Burton had anything of what Jeff said, or what we've just said now? Mr. Phillips?
No.
Did you need a motion on the things I said, or you just correspond back to him?
I'll correspond back to Jeff. All he needs at this point is if you want him to proceed, is a motion to, for him to approach the county, let's see, a vote, they want to proceed or not proceed with the process.
Do you have anything to add or talk about?
No, I was just concerned about, uh, if they, if they had a fundraiser, will get that money good.
All right, uh, Sheriff, entertain a motion that we, uh, instruct our attorney to please proceed with the, he's concerned to proceed with the process. I think that would be a
I'll make that appropriate motion. You made that motion, yeah. Motion by Mr. Park is your second.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Park, second by Ms. Ryan Burden, and you're stitching the motion. Sheriff votes yes. Mr. Park, yes. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips, yes.
And then we have three, um, development orders that have been forwarded over from the planning department. Let's see. The first one is property, it's Mr. Hagan's property for a pole barn at 1825 Hagan. It's under the clerk tab.
So, I'm going to admit that I don't know about setbacks, but based on what I've researched, the, uh, the Hagan Road, 1825, appears to have all the setback, no problems. It looks like they're actually, it's being recommended to us, is about the planning.
Right. And, and basically, on these things, the planning department takes care of all, making sure all of that's done. What they're wanting from the city is, do we have any objections to any of these people doing this stuff?
Do we need to make, be making any votes here, or just raise objections?
Do we need to do what?
Do we have, have votes here, or do we just, we do?
Yes.
And on that one, I would have to abstain, because, and I, I, and I thought, uh, that Mr. Park, it's on his exit song, that goes over already, and I don't have, uh, with the aspect of the, uh, if they don't have to interrupt, I can, I can wire it, if they don't have to interrupt the service, if REA has to come down, who the major do some things, it has to be permitted before they're turning that call, so, uh...
But we're not really agreeing to that, are we? We're just, that language.
We're just saying that we don't believe it's going to be, we have any problem with any, the use.
I'd just like to start out by saying I recommend we approve it, and we have a conversation. I mean, we'll have a conversation, sir.
Okay, let me, uh, let me relieve Mr. Chair. I think the order is that I can be engaged in a conversation, right-hand vote, and make a motion, so we'll assume the chair.
All right, I'll assume the chair.
Okay.
You have anything to say to what your recommendation?
No, sir, it's going to be for hay. Uh, I took, I took in a hay field about 30 years ago, and so far, it's, have sold as I harvested it each year, but it, it looks like the hay's going to do better than I'm going to store it.
Ms. Ryan Burden, do you have any?
I do not.
I have my question. So, I would recommend a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion. I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay. And I guess that's...
I'm not sure.
Uh, so I'll favor that, Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan Burden?
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes.
What would we even check out these votes?
Oh, Judy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you approve the pole barn?
It's a land, a land development review. Put a pole barn on Rogers property.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, but, yes, and I, and I apologize too. Have you heard our other boos, and do you agree with any of those?
Yeah. The other thing I got on the fire department is that I want, the land's going to stay in the fire department, going to stay in Walso's name, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of...
The word Walso is going to stay on the fire department.
Yes, it would be the Walso Station.
It's not going to be like Washington County Fire Department or something like that.
Uh, oh, no, I don't know about that. We will need to clarify that.
I know they still refer to study houses as, aren't you, Olivia?
All the other departments have kept their individual names.
Yeah, and in conversation, that's what, in conversation, that's what justice is saying, yeah. Now, they have to pay the bidder, but we, we can't say that one thing, but as far as we're concerned, that's what we can say.
I'm going to, maybe we skip to the next pole barn, so we can get those two out of way, and we come back to this.
So, you want to go to the, the next one?
Yeah, since we're in pole barn.
We're going to skip over to the 3493 Washington Street, and this is for a lean-to on an already existing pole barn at Discover Life. So, that Discover Life has already built a, um, section outside their church. They want to put a lean-to onto that existing structure, and so this is a land use general development review application to put the structure on it.
And that's the one high at the back corner, if you can see the highway, the street behind the church. That's just what I thought. Okay, if you've got a chance to look at the application, and, uh, maybe you've been by the property, what's the pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve that. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Hey, second. We have a motion, second, we approve the, uh, attachment to the, uh, Discover Life Church, uh, near Pole Barn in Scottsdale. Mr. Ford, yes. Ryan Bird?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Judy?
Yes.
All right. And then the third one is, um, and that, this is an application to the divis, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations, where they're applying for their, the Dollar Generals applying for their package sale license. And so, she wanted to send it to the town to make sure we didn't have any problem with it. I, I...
They already sell beer and wine and stuff, so I'm a little confused.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I mentioned that to Dawn when I talked to her, but she said this application, and it says tobacco. Are they selling tobacco already? Cause I, I noticed that the tobacco box is checked. They do?
I wonder if they gave them a, a leeway or something to come back?
Well, yeah.
Cause this is retail alcoholic, does not beer, wine, liquor. Oh, that's wholesale, sorry.
Now, do you know more about it?
Truthfully, I can either, because, uh, we have alcohol and alcohol beverages, and we're in Walsall sale. That's infected, that would, that would take criticism and everything. If not, then the county's borders is, and I believe they're too close to the church, straight across the street. And first, they came here to build, and one of the property end dollars, that's not that, they said they could make that store work without alcohol. They're saying, and, uh, almost from day one, they've had alcohol beverages.
She did say this was the same application that the M and, M and N, is that what it's called? Store on the south east of town had applied for, and, um, so...
Did we approve that?
I can't, I don't think, I don't think it overcame here. I don't think it came back.
I don't think so, yeah, that's tough. I don't think so, right here. Yeah, I don't know. Uh, I, I, I was under the impression, um, that we discovered that the, um, uh, I don't know if the word is... I'm trying to say, what is it? Regulation, uh, policies, that they did not prohibit the over counter sales, but they prohibited the consumption of alcohol. That there's, there's, that in the county, I believe Jeff wrote an opinion to us that, uh, there was no prohibition on distance for... Now, not to us, it was when y'all were doing it, I was making sure I kept the minutes, the minutes. I would always ask for the minutes. So, I'm glad to defer to Jeff on that, but I was thinking that there wasn't a county ordinance, that's a right ordinance, that prohibits over the counter sales, but that speaks specifically to consumption of. And so, I, now, that's not a reason to approve this, I'm just saying.
And there are, and there are two levels, consumption on premise and package.
But I think when they first asked this, we...
Does Jeff think this, uh, lay them aside, either our ordinance or the county ordinance or both?
Beginning to.
That's what I'm... You agree with that? Can I get a motion that would table this until our attorney has a chance to, uh, lay that application aside, the available ordinance?
I'd like to, I'm sorry. I'd like to ask him to give us an opinion, one way or the other, right? That, that he gives us, either affirmative or negative. Just what the ordinance says, we can do this out of all we want as a council, that, based on that.
You don't want him to deny something, get the orders loud, allow someone to... Get a motion to table.
I'll make a motion, we'll table this.
Have a motion or a second?
I'd like to.
Have a motion or a second, can you suggest on the motion? Ryan Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Ford, yes.
Judy?
Miss Judy Hall. Judy Hall, right.
The only other thing I have, but it just, and I, since this is my first time doing this, uh, Phillip has agreed to go to Pace, Florida for a distribution operator class. But imagine we had Mr. Register, he had both the water license and the distribution license. And so, Castle, Castleberry does not do distribution at all. Uh, Phillip's agreed to go to the class, it's a three-day class in Pace, Florida, uh, it's fifty dollars fee. And so, I didn't know, I typically bring that to the council and y'all vote on it, I didn't, if I just tell you about it, or...
Oh, he's your little state?
He is. We found a room for a hundred dollars a night, so it would be like a couple hundred dollars. And then, um, meals or whatever.
That needs to be...
If not, I've got to find a distribution operator for us to hire.
Uh... We'll have to hear again.
Right, oh, see, top top.
I don't know, so I'll make a motion.
I want to take a chair.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Take it.
Uh, I make a motion that we allow, uh, Phillip to go to the thing that we paid his per diem and log him.
Outlaid it. Any further discussion on that motion?
You're winning your seats.
Okay. So, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Hagan?
Yes.
Chair, oh, chair, yes, Chairwoman Jessica Ryan-Bird?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
And then just two points of interest. One is that June first through seventh is coming up, it's garden club month, and the garden club is gonna put in another display out in, in the little foyer area outside, for my garden club month. And this month, we received the county draw, the county fire draw for January, February, March. We, they had a loan that was four hundred and forty-five dollars a month, we had three payments left. I took the liberty of paying the loan off. We had the twelve thousand dollars that they had given us, thought it'd be best to get it off the books, and so I would have made the three payments.
So, that was, uh, it said fourteen thousand, but you, that's coming out of that fourteen thousand?
Right, right, that's coming out of there.
Kind of printed this, okay.
Right, yeah.
Maybe that's not an issue, if you had any wind gain, this, and we follow through with our...
We did, and I mentioned that to Jeff.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a USDA loan that the fire department had. It says it was for, to outfit the fire department, so I'm assuming it was the interior things. Um, it's six thousand dollars a year. There's still several years owed on it. And so, I did mention to Jeff that that would need to be part of the negotiations, that they pay it off. I did talk to USDA, and they said they will either allow the county to absorb the loan, or they can pay it off, they would take their money for it to pay it off. So, I told Jeff to make sure, if this goes forward, we need to make sure that that loan is negotiated, cause it's, can't remember how much it is. It's, it's a large amount.
Yeah, cause one thing you have to do, you have to draw.
Right.
You have to pay it off.
Yeah.
If it's very budgeted, so... I think our trucks are mostly...
I think they're paid off, yeah.
I think they are paid off.
I did get a, a email from the USDA lady saying that they would allow us to pass it on to the county or pay it off, or, or we can continue to make the yearly payments on our own. So, we want to make sure we get everything in writing, so it comes down to negotiation time. We can get, but I did pay that loan off for the fire department. That's all I have.
Mr. Ford, do you have anything for the council?
No.
Ms. Carter, do you have anything for the council?
Oh, did you find out all the big fans in the awesome house?
I did, I gave some prices last month. Um, they're very high. The big ones like we need are about three thousand dollars. Uh, the, the smaller, there are six or seven of the big round fans down there that sit on the floor. Uh, I gathered up about six or seven that were all different kind places. Uh, those, like we have down there, are about three hundred dollars. So, you know, we could, I think that's right. Let me, well, no, let me go back and look right here and see where they were last time. But I, there are some prices in your book. Let me get, hold on one second, let me go back and look real quick. Oh, yeah, um, three seventy-nine for the thirty-six inch big ones that sit on the floor, and seven ninety-nine for the sixty-inch. So, like about eight hundred bucks a piece.
Four thousand for the seven-foot ceiling.
Yeah, the big seven-foot ceiling ones is really what we need, they're about four thousand dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, they were high.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we talked about that at the last council meeting, but they didn't take any action because they were, they cost so much. Yeah, the Development Club is researching some kind of cooling system that we want to use this year for the stage area, for our, um, people that sing, cause they get so hot. So, we're looking at that, so that might be an option at some point down the road, as we begin to discuss and look and get pricing for stuff like that. So, um, right now, we're just gonna try to cool that stage area and see what we can find. And that maybe we could rent, think if we have some big gathering, maybe we could rent it for one day and that kind of stuff.
I don't remember the, uh, vendor's name, but there's some things that's available to emergency management. Not available to emergency, but the emergency management vendors, they, they show it at our conventions every year. And, uh, it's like, it's like, uh, uh, some of the biggest rooms, like portable rooms and force air, things like that. I don't know if that would apply to this application, and I don't know face on what we could, uh, catch it, contain it, or anything like that, but, um, I'm checking, I have to, I have been to one of our conferences in several years now.
Would y'all consider portico units?
That's what we're kind of looking at, for that stage area at least.
So, I, I actually rent those out. So, you're looking at, if you're gonna buy them, yeah, you're looking at three thousand dollars a unit. Now, if you're looking to rent them, you can rent them for two hundred dollars at the best, and, and you can get them for three to five days.
I'll get with you, cause we've been looking around some prices for funded, um, the Development Club, we, in the last year, if you were at Fund Day, we had the barn looking thing. We pulled that up and moved it further back, because this, we, we took the stage area. So, we took the stage area, moved that back, and then put a ramp inside one of the rooms for now for the, cause we used to have one lady that comes to do possum king and queen, that's handicapped, so we had to, had to, you know, accommodate her. And, um, so, that's what we were trying to do, is to see if we could get all the fans up on the stage and try to cool the stage area for now.
Yeah, one of the things that, that, the, the sound guy said he was kind of concerned about having any moisture up there. Uh, you know, that's, I don't know if those fans are able to, some, really typically work on water.
They do, but you're, you're not gonna push that as much to moisture to, to affect a, a sound, right? I mean, they, they go to Gulf Coast Jam every year, that's, that's what they use on top of the stations. So, I don't, I don't see that an issue. I do see an issue with your having eight-foot fans on the ceiling, cause that's gonna push a lot of dust.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, but it's, uh, so, sorry. That's a good idea, I'm glad you had that information for us.
So, we said we, we took a stage and compared, uh, extended stage.
Extended stage.
You know, we, we originally started on just a stage, and we did that to make it, uh, a little visible all the way around, and because of that hole there, the sound's not look good. But we, if we go back to that, it may have some of these other things, if we do something that, few cools that stage, and like, and make it from those other areas.
Yeah, we had, uh, we, we've hired, um, drum and sound for several years now, and, and they kept telling us, you would do much better with this. But now, they've got these loud speakers and big speakers, and, you know, we paying quite a bit of money to come do that, but, um, he said you would do, and you would have so much more area for your sitting, so people can spread out a little bit, and so, um, we did that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, I think it's gonna be really nice.
I did, I did the first possum king and queen thing, they were, they were flatbed trucks up there, and the ball fields to sit, and that way, and I can tell you, on a whole, it's not, it's hot.
It doesn't matter if you're in a building or not, right?
Building or not, it's really hot, hot, hot. Okay. Any other, Ms. Carter?
No.
Mr. Ford, anything for you?
I have nothing.
Ryan Bird?
No.
Mr. Phil?
Nothing.
Nothing from the chair. Go ahead and kind of motion to adjourn.
I'm entertaining, I'm moving.
My motion is second, all in favor of, of, of yourself.
Do something?